Yeah, no, no, no problem. Trying to get this other meeting going. It's mute.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me Jim? Colin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you Carl.
Alright.
Yep, yep. Okay. Alright, sorry about that. We just got raced through the end here of a planning commission meetings. Randy, is that you on an iPad or someone's on an iPad?
Let's be.
Who is it?
Randy.
Okay.
iPhone.
Sorry about that everyone. We got delayed at the planning commission meeting. What do I see on here? We have everybody on a quorum, you see?
Yeah, I think I just put Randy skippers for someone other than Randy.
We got Gail. She's muted.
We have, I'll ask Gail to start her video. We have Colin, Carl, Rick. I know Bill is. We also had Bill and Julie won't, won't be here. Bill might be in, in a little bit.
Alright, as long as we have a quorum, I'll start calling the order. Tonight's regular session for the village council for July 13th. And let me get to my agenda. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. We'll do it like the last time. I'm gonna go pretty quick, right?
Alright, we're, let's do it without the flag.
Right, I pledge allegiance.
That's pitiful.
Last time you said.
Speak for yourself, Gail.
I am.
Just take a moment of silence and when you're ready, Mr. Manager, I think, will you and Michelle be taking roll call tonight?
I'll be taking roll call. And we will have Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes, here.
Ms. Reaster?
Here.
Mr. Frisbee?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
And trustee Merrill is excused as is President Adams.
Well, thank you. We have an agenda in front of us if everyone's had a chance to review it. The entertain a motion to approve it or should they ask first, Mr. Mallory, are there any? Amendments to the, as it was written?
No, it's, I have no, no additions.
We entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Trustee Keller, I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Trustee Reaster, second.
Alright, we have an agenda approved.
We need a voice vote.
Yep. So I, I, I know Ms. Reaster supported, I believe, but my computer, it was Mr. Keller who made it. Thank you. Alright, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reaster?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? And the agenda is approved. There are no scheduled appearances or public appearance scheduled.
We'll take this time, I see there's others on the call.
And I think Mr. Adams is just joining.
Yes, and if I can, I'll vote yes on that motion too.
Okay.
Well, we'll take this time to address citizens' comments on the agenda item or a non-agenda item. We'll do it this time. And I see there's a few on there. Jim, if you would explain to them how to raise their hand if they have comments they want to make.
Sure, at the bottom of the screen, there's a button named reaction. You can click on that and click on a hand raised that we'll be able to see. And we do have one phone call, so I'll unmute the phone call, the number. I'm not sure who's calling in, but I'll ask them first. Do you have any comments to make on agenda items? The phone number is a 207 phone number. Do you have any comments? Okay. And I believe Ms. Coney knows how. If she had comments, she would.
Yeah, correct. Thank you. I don't have any. Thanks.
Okay. And Mr. Wagner, do you have any comments? And I think that was none, Mr. Frisbee.
Alright, well, moving on to item number nine, approval for general consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review it. And entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to, this is trustee Holmes, make a motion to general consent agenda.
Bailey, support.
I would like to make one statement, Mr. Mallory.
Yes, go ahead.
To ensure the good name of a village citizen, Norma Palmer, I reached out to her today to clarify why she was running the pavilion for her 25th anniversary and knowing that her and her late husband Bob Palmer were married for 55 years. And I just wanted to share with the council members for clarification that Norma, in fact, is not celebrating her 25th wedding anniversary and her, is her granddaughter. That it's a celebration for her granddaughter. By the way, that's called levity, everybody. Ah ha.
Alright.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second for the approval of the general consent. Jim, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
We don't have to take a vote on that.
We do need a roll call.
Yeah, we do need a vote.
We do need a motion in a second and then I'll do a roll call.
Well, you have that.
You do have that.
Alright, my, I'm, my problem is I'm having some screen issues. My wife just fired up our backup computer. So can I have a hand who made the motion?
I think it was Mr. Holmes, right?
Correct.
Okay, and who seconded, please?
Bailey.
Bailey, thank you.
I forgot it's in Fiji right now.
Alright, alright.
That's levity.
On the roll, on the roll call. Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reaster?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? And Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll jump to item 11, Mr. Mallory's report. He's got a couple of items that he wanted to address with us.
Yeah, we have just two informational items and then one request for a motion and support on a grant submission, but first is on July 1st of 2020, Michigan's Governor Gretchen Whitmore signed legislation into law that allows municipalities to establish social districts where people could dine and drink from open containers outdoors. The goal of the legislation is to make it easier for restaurants to take advantage of public outdoor spaces and for customers to enjoy social distancing. Staff is reviewing this legislation. I've had an initial meeting with the five liquor license establishments on this topic. All five establishments are very excited about this opportunity and looking forward to staff's review. It's our intention to have a detailed presentation with staff recommendations to the village council at the August 17th council meeting. And be happy to entertain any questions or thoughts that the council might have on that, but we wanted to inform you that we've undertaken, that was signed into law July 1st.
I have a question, Jim. I noticed that, I think it was at the tavern downtown that they had things outside. Is, they can't take drinks out there yet?
They, they can outside within the ropes. That's a different executive order that was implemented in June when bars and restaurants were able to go to 50% occupancy. And I think it was June 4th that I authored a letter for each of our liquor license establishments that gave them the ability to petition the Michigan Liquor Control Agency for that expanded seating outside. Thus, the goal is, was to make up for the 50% capacity that they lost. So the distant whistle and hideaway have taken advantage of that already. We have loaned them picnic tables that we had stored due to that are out there. And as well, you'll see the patio area of Main Street Pub will soon be expanded. And Main Street has the option, I'm not sure if they filed the paperwork with the state yet, but we also advised them if they wanted to go out on parking spaces on Prairie Street during this unique time. So it's a separate executive order that only allows the liquor or alcohol to be within those roped in areas.
So how is this different then?
This, this, this legislation, in this, the legislation allowing outdoor seating expires November 1st of this year. The license, or the legislation for social districts expires either December 31st, 2024, or 20, December 31st, 2025. So it's a lengthier period of time. That would allow a very specific cup that's marked, people could walk in between those establishments or where the council, the local municipality would set the boundaries of that district. And those are the details we're hoping to be able to present August 17th.
So it's really an extension of what is already set up in a way.
Correct, correct. It's been used in a few other states. Ohio's done it since 2017, just another avenue of economics for them. And I think I, I might have cut someone off, so I apologize.
No, it's Frisbee. I was just saying that, that right now they can go out in the roped off, the gated areas and socialize with alcohol. What this allows is the expansion of it to go from the distant whistle to hideaway or to any other establishment within that district with your alcohol.
Okay, thank you. That, that's clear.
Basically, it makes it a much larger area that you can actually drink outdoors.
They can do a pub crawl, basically, and not have to leave their drink at the establishment.
Okay, thanks.
Well, yeah, I gotta get back to it. So would anybody have any other questions they wanted to ask him, Mr. Mallory, about the social district? Okay, well, we can move into the sale of the property at TU Avenue.
Okay, back on April 20th, 2020, the village council unanimously voted for myself and Mr. Adams as village president to negotiate a sale of property that's not needed north of TU Avenue as it relates to the development of the non-motorized trail. We were able to complete that sale and have finalized it. We have provided the village council with, with the details of the sales price, interest rate over the course of a nine-year land contract. The first payment will be due in, no later than December 31st of this year. Once we receive that payment, I anticipate that staff will present to the council a recommendation to assign that money to non-motorized trail maintenance and/or improvements. So we know the sale, that it's not used for other, other items. And we can set that up, just like we assign money for DPW needs, police needs and such. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted the council to be aware that President Adams and I have completed that deal and it is, is signed.
I like the idea that it's going to be assigned for the trail. The money is going to be assigned for maintenance and things like that because I walk that quite often and it definitely needs to have some work done on it, so that's good.
Mr. Mallory, it's, it's trustee Holmes. Just out of curiosity, is the city of Portage still on plan for connection spring of next year? Have you heard any updates?
I haven't heard anything to the contrary, but I, it, it hasn't been on my radar, Rick, for six, eight months during this. So I'm anticipating it. It's still listed in caps, the, the financials.
Okay.
Alright, hearing no more questions, we'll talk about the CARES Act funding.
Yes, we, there's, on, on July 1st also, it's actually initiated through the federal government, but there's an earmark of substantial money to the state of Michigan for municipalities to submit for reimbursements of essential functions that were performed. I believe it goes back either to March 1st or March 13th. So under the policy of the village, we're requesting council support that staff submits a grant for reimbursements of all expenses that would be allowed under this. And prior to the submission of that grant, we'll certainly detail to the council what those details are. We just wanted to start working on it to be our goal, to be able to submit it by the end of August.
Does that, does that give us a better chance of getting the money if you do it right away?
It's first come, first served.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Jim, do we have to develop what we want the money for? Identify?
The, in the, I, I've sat through one of the PowerPoints live. There's another one on the 27th to more detail. As I see it, so, what stuck out for me for the Village of Vicksburg purposes are our payroll expenses as it relates to our police and our DPW functions, be it the importance and criticality of the water and sewer of them being essential employees as well. So we're going to dive into the details. We can go as far as, I mean, we had some limited expenses, but they're still in the thousands of dollars, the, the different. Most people haven't seen, we put a very professional barrier up and down at Village Hall to protect the employees when we do open up to the public. We've purchased additional masks, additional gloves, additional sanitizer for the employees and the lobby stuff. And all of that is eligible as well. There's a component, I don't know the specific details of it. There is $100 million worth of essential worker. I don't think they titled it bonus, but it would be $1,000 per essential worker. There's 300 million and kind of what I just talked about, an additional 100 million for, to cover the essential workers during that time.
So it specifically calls out the employees?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, does anyone have any other questions? If not, any discussions would entertain a motion to, Mr. Bailey?
Just a quick question. Jim, do you know if that, or just municipality or is that across the board essential? Workers get that money?
The, the, the grant I'm speaking of is specific to municipalities, cities, towns, villages, and that.
So it's not just all essential workers?
Not, not to my knowledge, but who, our connections through the Michigan Municipal League are those, that's, and we're their clients, the municipalities. So all the information I'm receiving is specific to municipalities.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, hearing no other discussion points, entertain a motion to submit the grant to the state of Michigan for the CARES Act.
Trustee Keller, I so moved that we allow the staff to begin working on the grant for the Michigan CARES Act funding.
Ms. Reaster, second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second that requests CARES.
Jim, real quick, how, do you think you're going to have the grant information back to us next meeting?
It would, it's my hope, certainly before the September meeting, we're trying to, I'm trying to by the end of the week finalize the grant that the council's already approved for the EDA and, and then we're, the social districting will take a priority to the finalization. I certainly, certainly can 100% commit to an update on the details at the August 17th meeting, but it truly will be our goal to have, have all of that completed.
Thank you. We need to take a vote on this, don't we?
Yes. Correct.
Yep.
Hey, one last, if I could, Jim, is, is the possible infrastructure related to the CARES Act, is that part of this or is this strictly what you, what you outlined, the village employees and?
Yeah, not infrastructure to, to what I'm speaking of tonight, Mr. Holmes. I don't believe is included. It's, if we dig into it more and find that, but I don't believe it is. The infrastructure I mentioned relates to CARES money out of the EDA federally. This grant will be submitted to the state that I'm talking about tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, if there's a, a web broadcast that anybody would like to sit in on, if you could share it with the team here, perhaps? We'd have some interest to sit in and listen on that.
Yep, I'll, the next one is July 27th. I did forward to the council blind copy wise, copy of the PowerPoint and summary on the grant that DMML distributed. But I will email out when the live version, the follow-up is on the 27th.
Thank you, sir. Did we do roll call?
No.
We should take a roll call on it.
Okay, alright. Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reaster?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Okay. I would just update on the parking lot that we're constructing on Kalamazoo Avenue. The lights, the solar lights were installed over the weekend. We're anticipating, hopefully by the end of this week, the bike rack to be installed and we'll have a topter placed down and we'll be looking before the end of the month to have a ribbon cutting ceremony on that parking lot. We'll also be placing a pretty professional sign that identifies it as a municipal free parking and downtown development authority dollars used to enhance our downtown. So be looking for that date to come by the end of the month.
Alright. Well, as soon as we got to village president's time, Mr. Adams, you have anything you would like to say?
Yes, I'd like to first commend the staff on the CARES Act funding that they're applying for. And that's, I'd like seeing those type of things. I'd like to make sure that the council's aware that we're still looking for an open position on the park and recs committee. And I, hopefully trustee Holmes can comment if Jenny is still working with the schools. And the final thing is, I'd like to remind all council members that I think February, or July 21st is the final day for, in the applications for the upcoming fall election. I think there's a number of open questions for some of the council members. I hope those get answered if they, they aren't. And then everybody gets their applications in. That's my comments, Mr. Reaster.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna pass, I did all the talking in the planning commission meeting, almost made us late, so. I'll go to, Mr. Holmes, you have anything you'd like to comment on?
I'll answer President Adams' question that, yes, Jenny is, is still working with the schools as it relates to, with, with getting, getting students involved in, in parks. Also, it's my understanding that we have received President Adams, one or possibly two applicants. So it's great to see that citizens are sending applications and.
Good.
What about Ms. Reaster?
I'd just like to express my sympathy to Julie Merrill and her family on the death of her dad. He was a very active person in our community and it is, will be a great loss to the community.
Thank you for that, Gail. You're absolutely right. Mr. Bailey?
I'm all set, Tim. I'm just trying to figure out, is Rick, are you in like?
He's incognito.
Fitness protection.
Yes, exactly.
You can't have those windows behind you, Rick.
Carl, Mr. Keller?
Well, I'd like to tag on what Gail said. Obviously, Bob was one of the pillars in the community. You know, I feel we've lost two, two titans with Sue Moore and now Bob Merrill. Bob was a Lion member for, he's, he's the oldest Lions member in the club and he's going to be sorely missed. It was, I was deeply, deeply saddened when I saw the email this morning.
Thank you, Carl. I think I got everybody?
A question for the staff. Is it appropriate we do something as a council relative to Bob Merrill? That's a question that's to be handled offline.
Jim, you're muted.
That's up to the individual or collective council members as a group.
So the council could move to do something as a council. This is something we can discuss in the next seven to 10 days, I would say, then.
Yeah, it, it would be something, municipal funds cannot be used or expensed for that. So it would be individual, if that's what, one of the options.
The last, when Sue Moore passed away, we all put something in, kicked it in and did it as a council, I think.
Okay.
So anybody interested in doing something like that as a council can email me or give me a call.
Okay, that sounds good.
Alright.
Isn't there, we can, we can, trying to think of the term that we've done in the past where we've acknowledged.
A resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, certainly can do that.
Yeah.
I think that would be very, very appropriate, actually.
Okay, we can, we can have that prepped and ready to go by the next council meeting.
Great, I think, I think we shouldn't, well, Julie will be there, but it would be nice to have the family there.
Point, just a question, did we do a resolution for Sue?
We didn't, we did a formal resolution honoring Sue back in fall of 2018, I believe it was. And then we did another in conjunction with the Farm to Table event with that group in 2019, but upon her passing, just each of, each council member spoke quite eloquently on it, but not a formal resolution.
I just, where I'm going with this, I just think maybe we're looking to have that. I just, where I'm going with this, I just think maybe we're looking to have that state of the village meeting, I think in the, towards the end of the year, correct? Hopefully, at R and R.
Yeah, it's all predicated on, you know, I was hoping in October, but the way things are going, it'd probably be next spring, but yes.
Oh, okay. Where I was going with that, it would be nice to have both resolutions or proclamations for that meeting, for both of them, for both Sue and for Bob. That's, that's where I was going with it, so.
We are, as we sit right now and before, we are planning on holding the next meeting at, at the pavilion at the historic village. So it is outdoors and we can have appropriate social distancing. Depending upon any executive orders changing between now and then, I guess it's possible that gets bumped to September, but it'll all be predicated on, on the direction of the, of the executive orders.
I think that's a good idea. Any other discussion for the evening? Well, you were right on. I missed a half hour quicker than our planning commission meeting. Thank you all, thank you for being on. I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Hold it, Tim. Tim, are you there? You have listed on the agenda citizen comments. Did, did all the citizens for non-agenda items, they'd get three minutes a day? Get a chance?
We, we can do that again, but on item three, I offered it up as agenda items or non-agenda items, but let's offer it up to the community, if there, if anyone's on the line that has a item they'd like to speak to, we got to wait three minutes. If you could just make yourself known, touch your screen and raise your hand.
Jackie.
Hi, Jackie, 234 West Highway. I just wanted to thank and amend the council and staff for being so helpful and flexible and supportive of businesses, for having outdoor spaces for people to sit having the parking spaces for hardware store and rise and dine. Anyway, I just think it's great and it's really been a lot of fun to be downtown, even though it's, we've had COVID, so I think it's a really great step and I really appreciate it as just a regular old citizen and having a good time downtown. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, for that. Is there any other citizen that would like to comment? The 207 phone number?
No, I got an indication they did not.
Okay. Well, then, you call this meeting adjourned? Everybody's shaking their head, yes. All right, thank you all. Have a good night.
You too, Tim, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye, Carl. Get another joke.
Hey, what did I do here? You gonna end that or not?
Yeah, I'm gonna end it all, easily, make sure.